What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session. And today we're gonna be looking at how to structure your range after it goes bet and call in front of you. So here we are, here, um, board is ace, ace, four, or thirty big blind, single raise spot. We open from the hijack button calls, big blank calls, so big blind is gonna check. We're gonna check it out. And what we wanna see here today is when the button bets and the big blank call. How do we structure our range on ace four, four? So let's get started.
This one's too similar to the one we just did.
Yeah, what do you do with pocket five here?
Alright, it's not exactly too similar, I guess. Pocket fives here.
Go ahead, Danny.
Me, I mean. I don't know, man, I'm tempted to overcall pocket fives with the. With the stuff, like the big blind can have a four now, right? Like in, in the ace, ace queen, he had. A lot of ace X, a lot of queen X and gutters. Now he'll also have a lot of ace X, a lot of four X and some gutters.
Okay, so like we're talking like you wanna call pocket three more than pocket seven here.
I wanna. Hmm. Yeah.
Pocket those is gonna call more, but you probably don't have much deuces or trees cuz you opened from the hijack from thirty. Might have them, who knows?
These low ones are good cuz if we turn a boat, they might turn us straight.
Pocket fours are gonna raise some bit.
Yeah.
They're gonna mix, call and raise.
Okay.
The better aces are gonna mix, call and raise.
What about sixes and sevens? Call with that?
Is this the same spot?
Could be where we get some bluffs from. It makes sense again on a pair board to use them. Like our worst pairs, which are probably sixes and sevens. In terms of like.
No, no.
Equity?
I, I think those.
No, you don't think they're worse, or no, you don't wanna bluff them?
That's a good point, I like that.
I, I don't, I think they might have a little bit. In value to not bluff them yet.
Okay.
Especially sixes and seven, well, yeah. I don't know.
Yeah.
I just think our bluff is gonna come from somewhere different.
Okay, so we can. I'd rather use sixes than like queen jack of spades, I think.
We have king five suited in range, like that might bluff. King five diamonds maybe, bluffs.
I think a lot of the, a lot of the buffs might come from the suited broadways that have backdoor straights and backdoor flushes.
Do they need to block in general in these kind of positions, maybe just set valuing? The pocket pairs?
The.
Anyway, let's raise ace king most of the time, raise ace queen most of the time.
But why? Like they're the nuts.
Exactly.
So. Like I feel like I'm gonna struggle to find bluffs here. So already if I'm raising all my off, even if I'm just raising all my offsuit ace king. And sets of fours like.
He'll be in balance.
Where are my bluffs at?
I, I see eighteen combos in the suited. Broadways. If we just use the backdoor, backdoor.
But you think we wanna really raise all our suited broadways? I guess, I guess we could.
Not all, but depending on how many we, we need. We have eighteen potential. Combos if we wanna go there. But I think all, I don't, I don't think any of the aces are raising pure. I think they're gonna.
I agree. Even ace king will flat some, I, I'm with you. I think it's, I think ace king should be majority raised, but maybe Ken's right, maybe we just don't raise much.
Maybe we raise like king four suited, like king four, or king, we don't have king four, right? We don't, so I think it's king five might be bottom.
Louis, I think ace four suited might be a call. Because it blocks everything. The opponents can't have nothing when we have ace four suited.
Could be, let's keep that in mind.
And all their pairs are dead. Like if they have pocket nines, it's dead and we want them to turn a nine. But we can, if they happen to have the other ace, we can get value, I guess, but. Rather use ace king, I think.
Oh. If, if the buttons potential bluffing hands are suited broadways. What do we wanna do with them? As way of like ace, king, ace, queen, ace, jack, ace, ten?
So I'll tell you right now, I don't have any raises in this spot, I'm just gonna call, I see what develops on the turn. Whatever range I wanna continue with, my ace X, my four houses. Um, and my pocket pairs. I'm just calling. I feel like we might wanna raise some of our worst pairs, maybe, but.
What do you do with pocket six?
Well, the problem is, the button has jacks, tens, nines, eights, sevens, right?
So you're folding your sixes, is that what you're saying?
Hmm. No, I don't, I just always say I wanna fold sixes, but I don't know how much I wanna raise them. Just because the button still has better pairs in range and ace X, and the button's got all a lot of ace X, we know that, or the big blind, we already know he's got plenty of aces, like. Do I really wanna be raising into like the big blinds defending range? And the button who has all the other pairs that are four up to like, I don't know.
Wait, wait, you think the button's sitting there with jacks and he's gonna not fold if we. Yeah, but he's just gonna fold. If we raise sixes, he's gonna fold nines a hundred percent.
Nah, I don't think so.
It's pure folding, with the big blind behind, he has to.
Nah, maybe. So that'll be cool, if that's cool, then that, that would be cool, honestly.
May, a big maybe we raise sixes, what do we do with nine stands?
I mean, I just wanna call those.
Mix call and fold.
Aces, kings, uh, more like kings.
Ace, aces is pure call to me.
You're gonna, yep, yeah, and kings and queens will mainly call.
Okay, this, this portion now.
Will mainly fold, and then tens and jacks, I don't know.
This portion with a backdoor flush, do we call?
Mix raise and fold, maybe?
So king queens are my best unmade hands, so I think I'm just gonna call those.
Yeah, float the king queen with the, with the backdoor.
What about these two? And then this.
How many value hands do you have in the raising range?
Seventy-eight.
I'm not trying to go run around or straight, like I'm folding king, jack, queen, jack, I'm just fold, I'm just overfolding, it's just what it is, I'm out.
I'm gonna raise or fold, even king queen suited, I'm gonna raise or fold all the broadways.
Okay, and what do you think we do with like a king five suited here, or a king, a queen five?
I think king five could get spicy.
Maybe, a king six?
No.
Uh, nah, I mean, if I'd need the wheel, I think, that's one of the reasons why I even came up with that, like, so like, okay, we got backdoor, we got a king high, which might be good if we had a king.
You wanna look king three, we don't have much king three.
Yeah, we don't have that crap, so.
What do you do with?
Have a lot of raises, but I think if we do have some value raises, I think king fives is a decent bluff.
Alright, well, we're done guessing.
What is the green? And the, the different, you had some greens and blue.
Uh, green here is a call.
And blue is a raise, okay.
King five.
And red?
Call.
Is also a call, why are green and red both call?
Cuz. It's just a.
Just for fun.
So six, five and seven, six makes sense, I didn't even think about having them in range, they, they're good to raise, obviously.
Which one? Oh, five, six, six, seven.
Yeah.
Okay, so ace king, Danny, look at this.
It's rich, huh?
Raising a lot more than I thought, and we're die, we're value heavy though, right?
Okay, so here, look at this, even though like it's ace four. Uh, so I thought maybe like it just wants to call with like. All the lower end. All of this. Then ace seven is like mixing.
So that's cuz we could be outkicked, honestly.
Yeah. And then look at.
And you move the. Range over a little so we can see the bottom end.
You mean here, like this?
Yeah, perfect.
Alright.
Thank you. So threes are raising, huh? How'd this kinda backwards? Fives and threes raised more than sevens and sixes.
Well, it makes sense cuz you have a pair. And you can make a straight, you know, a backdoor straight.
I just think they're pure bluffs.
Yeah, I think you get sevens and sixes to fold as well, don't you, whereas the. You don't need to raise as much with seven and sixes cuz. They could have fives and fours and threes and whatever.
Okay, and then everything else we follow, we don't need to call that. I thought we were way too tight, but then.
The queen ten, queen ten, jack ten backdoor. Suited is.
And why do you guys think we call with like a seven, six?
They're raising.
They're raising. Back.
So there are like worst, they're like the worst hands we have, I guess, I mean, we got a shit ton of really bad hands, but it's picking the worst. They unblock all the folds, I guess, and they have some backdoors.
You can make a straight flush.
Okay, and then you guys saw this one, check then suited, raising, not calling?
Yeah, I saw those too.
Multi-way?
Yeah, they were in my bluffing range, but. I was going too wild with the backdoor. Broadways. And they seem just wanna do the tens. Like they're just slivering queen jack, but.
So your absolute backdoor, absolute worst backdoor broadways. The queen ten, jack ten, and then. Some of the couple of low connected, two connected ones. And some.
Why do we think it's the tens? Is it the ones right above their flattening range? Like they don't have pocket tens in range?
I, I mean, I don't know, I'm just guessing, just cuz it's our worst Broadway and they have, but it's like our worst back, it's just the worst hands that have backdoor Broadway draws, just the worst. And I suppose they might be, the buttons probably betting some king X and shit like that, jack X, I don't know. Queen X, really don't know. I'm not bluffing these spots really, so.
Yeah, I guess if they're betting like queen jack, you can bluff them out with queen ten, it's pretty good.
Okay, what about ace, king, king?
Alright, so the easy ones I think are pocket a, pocket aces, pocket kings, ace, king, all call.
Not sure.
I think you can actually raise quad kings and not aces, cuz like at least they could have, if we have aces, it's hard for them to have an ace, but when we have quad kings. Uh, big blind's got all the ace X, right? Button's got a lot of ace X, so I don't hate raising the quad kings. But I wouldn't raise.
Yeah. I could see that.
Okay, what do we do with a bunch of aces? We just call with most of them, is deuce, is three, is four. We can't fold an ace here, right?
No.
So we call every one of them?
Well, but it looks like it likes to raise, well, okay, it's gonna raise something.
So, so this is.
Do you fold? Do you fold any of the baby aces?
Hmm, I, I was just thinking maybe the non-back. Like seven and under, maybe the non-backdoor flush one might fold.
Okay. We'll see. Could be a thing. Um, what about kings?
We're gonna raise some. Right, we're gonna raise some kings, right, but.
All of them, or?
I don't know.
It's like last, the last one where like you'll raise king queen every time probably, and then the lower you get, the more calling it becomes. Like king five will call the most.
Yeah, no, it's definitely gonna be mixing to keep the big hands in.
So maybe something like this?
Calling queens, jacks, tens, I guess, right?
Do we have king ten in range?
Hmm.
Yes, I think we do.
Yeah. And yeah, Louis, it's just gonna be like a gradient, right? Like each, each combo will call more than the previous as you go down.
Okay, what about queens? Ladies call once?
I think we call queens, jacks, tens, maybe we bluff the queen ten suited, jack ten suited again.
At what point in pairs do we start throwing?
Bluffs? Oh my goodness.
Just the bottom, right?
I, I mean, I could, I could be sticky with nines.
Threes, fours, fives.
Really? Is that really the, the, the thing here?
I'm not raising the sixes, sevens and eights.
Put that, put them in, put that stuff in call or undecided now?
Yeah, undecided, it's quite, feels undecided, what about nines?
Obvious bluffs on this board are queen, jack suited, queen ten suited, jack ten suited with a backdoor.
There's no way nines is gonna bluff, right?
I don't think so, and.
Do they call?
No.
I, maybe, I mean, I'm, I could see myself calling.
Bottom, maybe, okay.
Now, I'll say. One thing I wanna say about the pocket pairs is a lot of times we'll see like pocket pairs will have low weight bluffs if they match something else, like so if we're bluffing king seven suited. Sevens might bluff some, but probably not pure, the eights, if we got king eight suited, the eights might bluff some, but not pure. So like if we're not gonna use any six X, like king, king six suited, I'm not gonna bluff my sixes ever, I guess.
Hmm.
So I, I guess, like if this would be our range, I would have mixed weights on sevens and eights and not sixes.
And then these three with the backdoors?
I mean, yeah, at least two of them, right?
I think they're easy.
At least the worst two, it looks like, in the last one.
I think we got the range.
Wait, you're missing threes, fours, fives are probably bluffing.
I'm folding.
Or folding.
The bluffs with pairs may come with suit selection.
Is eight too high if we got like fours and fives here?
Yeah, I don't know.
What, Joey, like you wanna not have a heart?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so you're raising some of the wheel aces, so yeah, we could probably bet some of our worst pairs and then call the other ones, if we, if we're raising H two, H three. We're just calling the red, right? Are these calls the red?
Red is call.
I'm not raising sixes and sevens.
Let's see, what ten, seven?
Well, it could be a thing, could be a bottom here.
Do we have five, four suited in range in the hijack?
I think we're gonna have some, some of that, yeah.
We have some seven, six and six, five.
I think they fold here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but five, four suited is different cuz it has the wheel draw too.
Alright, so yeah.
I don't think we have that, this one.
It's in range though, I'm not sure though.
Yeah, we got it, I don't know what was out, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Wow, we're folding queens.
Hey. Oh my goodness.
Ace, seven and below folding, I guess that's based on suits.
So notice that there is a tiny sliver of sevens and we're raising king seven, eight, seven, so it does do that like kinda card matching thing a little bit.
I was gonna ask, I didn't get a chance to ask, but we are doing it. If we turn the baby ace X into a bluff ever. Ace, four, ace, three, ace, deuce are all raising a little bit. And that's, that's like. Pretty sure we're, pretty sure we're like, our kicker's so bad, I'm turning this into a bluff, maybe I spun top boat.
Even look at the offsuit hands and the suited hands that are bluff raising. They are, they have blockers to the king. Like king, queen, king, jack, king ten.
Yeah, if we could see E V, I don't think these ba, these real aces are technically bluffs. Although they feel like it, right?
So the big takeaway I think here is the mixing for the aces, right? That's who's folding is nine there.
If they weren't bluffs, they wouldn't ever be folding.
Yeah, I'm not folding.
If you remember, I said I was gonna fold a seven and below. That doesn't have the backdoor flush.
Yeah?
But queens, jacks, my god, like, huh.
Is that what's going on here? Yes, it is, right? So hearts fold.
Yeah, the hearts are folding, the others are in there.
The others are hamburgers.
Uh, okay.
But I, yeah, I'm surprised that we don't call any pair below the kings.
Yeah.
I saw like queens, jacks and tens.
The ladies, man, how could we be folding the ladies? I mean.
They block their only bluffs too.
Yeah.
It's again, okay, let's, hold on, let's look at big blind range. I just wanna say, this is probably why we're folding the queens, cuz their range is gonna be aces and kings and.
Bunch of kings. Few aces.
Bunch of aces, all the aces, every ace they have in range calls. They're not raising any kings in, in the middle. They, their range is so strong.
Yeah.
Alright. Sorry, another board.
Do they just have paired boards?
Now watch this one.
Oh, okay.
Check, check. That's my call, welcome. Welcome to, oh, what the hell are we gonna do? Okay, pairs with a heart. We saying we fold all the pairs that don't have a heart, right? Do we call with like pocket five? With a heart?
No.
I'm lying.
Well, let's save.
Just jacks and tens.
Let's save them because I think it depends on how much other things we can play.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah.
Let's start with, with raising?
A whole lot of other hands in range that we could play, we could just let go nines and below.
Do you raise jack ten pure?
Start with value raising. Yeah, raise jack ten. Without a heart, pure, with a heart, trap some?
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
So we got jack ten off as well, so yeah, we can just, uh.
Not very, not very heavy here, I think. Or have much? Not much.
We could probably raise all the ones we have there.
No, we just open every time.
If it's in range, it's just slivers.
Well, okay, whatever.
Surely we open that every time.
Jack ten off, Danny.
From, from hijack.
I think that's partial fold.
Button cut off hijack, no, y'all, really?
We should be opening all our offsuit tens.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're opening ace eight off, I think, right, so.
What are we at, thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Aces, do we have to call our worst aces, or can we fold most of them? Like ace, eighth, no heart.
This board's a little more draw heavy, so I leaning towards defending my aces, all of them.
Yeah. All of them?
Yeah, it's a little more like, so it's not a paired board, so the big blind now isn't gonna be, they're still gonna overfold, but it's not gonna be as drastic as the ones we've been looking at. So their range is gonna have a lot more draws here, they're gonna have all the heart draws probably, right? They're gonna defend eight, all their aces or kings.
Maybe I'm wrong.
Maybe all their, maybe all their queens.
I, I, I feel like we might fold some low aces.
I don't think so.
It might be mixing.
No, I think we will.
Yeah, there's a lot more two pairs. Available. Great draws.
Okay, so. So let's, let's go to the calls, right? We're calling king ten, king jack, queen ten, queen jack, ace, jack, ace, ten. All that's just always gonna call, right?
I just did our check something real quick. Uh, uh, so as far as someone said they have a lot of two pair combos, like big blind isn't gonna have, uh, ace, king, ace, queen, king, queen. They're just gonna, uh, maybe they have some weights of king, queen. Off, but I think they're jamming king, queen suited, right, pray? So if not both, I think they're squeezing all those, so I don't really worry about them having two pair combos.
Big blind shouldn't have jack ten either, right?
Uh, jack ten, yeah, I think.
Dude, maybe not jack, dude. Jack ten suited, right?
Yeah, maybe not jack ten suited.
In G T O wizard, king, queen off is full frequency in the big blind range.
Uh, but king, queens jamming, right? Suit it?
Yeah, king, queen suited is either jamming or raising.
Yeah, so, but, and then they'll have ace, king, uh, or, uh, ace, queen, right?
Right.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Right. What do we do with two pair? You raise bottom two here?
Danny was up. I interrupted Dan.
Oh. I would call king, queen, raise ace, king. Uh. And.
I think it's usually the opposite way around.
Okay.
What about ace, queen? Ace, queen, my mix?
Because if you raise ki, king, queen. He can have aces in range that he's still gonna play, play back at you with.
Yeah.
Ace, jack?
Maybe it's the S P R, it's okay.
You call your ace, jack? Probably.
Yeah, I would call ace, jack always, I don't know if king, queen has high enough equity. Maybe like the king of hearts ones?
Okay, so raise sometimes, call sometimes.
Do we want him to have the king of hearts? Yeah, I don't know.
King jack, king jack has to call? King ten?
Yeah, call king, jack, king ten, queen, jack, queen ten.
What about ace nine, oh? And the dirty aces? Call, call, call?
Wait. You, what, blue has been. Blue should, was raising and now you're using it for calling. Yeah, and king, jack, king ten. I don't know, the dirty aces, I'm, I'm kinda with you, I'm, think I wanna call ace nine, ace eight. Probably, but then like fold some of the offsuit one, or sorry, the suited low ones.
When we have a heart. Do we raise? Do we call?
Nah, cuz we're raising the nine of heart, eight or, I don't know why we wouldn't do that.
We don't have the ace of hearts ever.
But we got the nine, the seven.
We don't have ace seven off, I don't think.
Slivers, we do, we have it partially.
So what do you do with your seven of hearts here? You just call with it?
I'm calling all my, I'm calling all my ace X, I'm not folding any.
Okay, what, what about these? You wanna call them?
I'm just calling all of them.
I feel like we're gonna have a lot more raises here, cuz I think this is a boy we're gonna bet in the middle a lot too.
I, I think once we get down to ace seven. We're gonna start having folds. We're gonna fold some, but have some folds in the lower aces.
Could be.
I think we're folding all our under pairs.
Where are we bluffing from?
That's what I'm gonna try to get to, I wanna find all my.
Jack nine suited, ten nine suited.
What have I done?
Oh no, you wiped it out.
I clicked on view instructions. No.
Can you go back?
So I like this.
No.
I'm gonna, I would like to start with my falls, I would fold all my under pairs to like.
Let's just jump to the solution and move on. Let's see.
Even the tens fold, jack and call.
Okay, so first off, let's, let's, uh, look at the other spot, cuz, uh, it seemed, oh. The turn is back.
Oh.
Turn is back, yeah, so. So first, I'm guessing that, um, hijack doesn't check much on this board? Let's see. Ah, that's the thing here. Yeah. So.
Yeah, I was gonna say that before we, but I still thought. With the ace, king, queen, I thought we did bet a lot, but I thought we checked a bit more than this. I thought it was more like fifty, fifty.
So. Pair days, we, we check a lot, but ace, king, queen?
Ace, queen, queen is probably the absolutely best board for us.
Possibly, right? Bet sixty percent of the time, so this is basically what we're gonna do most of the time, right? And then the rest is just, that's why it's the tough spot to play after it goes, if you're betting two. Yes. Uh, let's go back, yeah.
And what sizing does it prefer? An ace, king, queen?
Two big blinds, only small.
Now, this isn't the right spot.
It is.
Cuz it had raises in it. If it checked us, we have no raises.
This is, whose range is this?
What, what are you trying to look at, Joey?
This is after the bet, we.
The hijack C bet range.
Oh, we, we looked at it already. Want me to go back?
Yeah, isn't that what we?
No, that's, that's it. Sixty-one percent bets. But when we face a bet.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Check. Bet small, call. Now the range is a lot more, so I, when we saw that, I knew something was up cuz it's so thin, right?
Yeah, we have to call all the aces now.
Yeah. And then raising with a seven of heart? Oh.
Some. Some pocket tens, pocket jacks.
Ten of heart, jack of heart.
Jack ten, of course. Hearts are trapping. We didn't fold an ace, right? All the baby aces.
Can we start going down instead of, cuz we're gonna run out of time. If we look at all the aces, we won't get to any other board.
But you know, Joey, that there's more ace high board than anything else, right? But which one would you like?
I don't think so.
I never realized that Louis until I read that in your article and then I spent like ten minutes thinking about it and realized you were right and my mind was blown.
Yeah, and then it's king eyes.
Yeah, so maybe we should do a king board.
Well, let's do a monotone, maybe? Ace, I monotone?
And it's not three Broadway two. It's high, high, low. Well, the reason I think that might be wrong in combinatrix is. Well, that doesn't matter what's dealt because it's still the same.
So let's see here, do we have a lot of leading? I don't think so, right?
I mean.
I don't know.
Forty percent?
The big blind has so many flushes.
Yeah, but he's got, he's only got uh twenty five percent of them are clubs. All the rest are diamonds, hearts and spades, right? A button is defending a lot of suited stuff too, more than uh offsuit.
I think I checked this a hundred percent.
No, the buttons defending more suited stuff, right? He's could have three bet is all suit stuff.
The only thing I really want to bet here is like ace, queen with the queen of clubs.
Twenty percent bets.
Well, not much betting, so we're gonna face that bet mo- most of the time, that, oh, here we are. So question number one. Do you have to call with any three X or?
No.
No three X at all, right?
Ace three.
What three X do we have? Yeah, it's just ace three, right?
King three?
I don't think we.
We're not folding a set. We're not folding two pairs, so.
Do we call with pairs of jacks?
They have a club.
If they have a club, I'm not interested in that cuz it's just club hands, right?
Okay.
Yeah, no club, like Jack ten of hearts.
Yeah, man.
I think we fold it all.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, hands like queen, jack and jack ten off with a club during.
What about pairs without clubs? Like pocket tens. It's no club.
Yeah, all that's out. Kings, no club, put it in the muck.
You guys realize that? We can't defend.
King so fast.
One small bet, I'm sorry. Can't, I can't fold kings.
So do we have much of a raising range here?
You looking for your one out, Ken?
I'm looking for the board to run out with no clubs and check down. Calling the flop, though.
What?
We call ace, jack, we call ace three, we call aces, we call jacks. I think all the sets and two pairs wanna just call. I could be wrong. And then we raise like ace, queen, queen of clubs. We raise like king, seven of clubs. Probably fast play our nuts.
We're gonna raise some flushes, right? The bad value portion of our range, I think it's gonna be flushes and it's gonna be like our lower flushes to where we unblock them from having like a king of club, queen of club.
I think we just use our nuts.
Yeah, I think we would raise flushes worse than a ten high.
Like nine, eight of clubs, I would pure call here.
I would raise those.
Maybe it's.
So I'm not gonna have a ton of raises and I just wanna unblock them from having the single club that could continue.
I think it might be the other way around. When we have the king of clubs, like king, qu-. King, queen of clubs, king, ten clubs, stuff like that. I think that's gonna be more calling.
Pure call. I agree. Yeah, yeah.
It it might be mixed, but it's gonna keep some of the nuts in for. The calling range.
Don't we wanna raise our shitty flushes here? Isn't that what we we wanna do?
What I said.
Yeah, that's that's where I'm getting at. The better ones will just call. The shittier ones are the ones that's gonna.
Okay, so you got one like tall, like king, queen?
I would bluff king of clubs, queen and king of clubs ten. I would trap king, queen of clubs, king, ten of clubs always and probably king, nine of clubs. I would raise the king, eight, seven, six, five of clubs, not flushes. And then I would just call everything else mainly.
Raising with clubs or single club.
No, take the jacks out. They're gonna be calls.
Yeah, king, king of clubs, jack, you just call. But like, and like queen, ten of clubs, I think also is pure calling.
Uh, are you raising ace ten?
Why would you raise ace ten? Oh, it's that ten of clubs.
Ah, well, we turn it. Is it value or bluff?
I think, no, I think it's just ace, king, ace, queen with.
Ace, king, ace, queen with the club? And then what about these two?
I think we're gonna have so many flushes, we don't need to raise our single pair hands.
Those call.
Yeah, that's it. Like I'm only raising flushes here, Joey, and uh some bluffs.
I I think you guys are underestimating how often lower flushes will call here, but that could be off base.
Oh, they for sure will.
That's why I don't wanna turn ace, king into a bluff.
No, for in our range.
I, what do we do with all of these pair of aces?
I'm definitely calling ace three. Um, I think ace two, ace three, I think they can call the wheels could, I mean, I don't know, like, I think you gotta call your aces one street again. Like they just don't have a flush here every time, so I can't fold the one small bet with my aces.
There's two of them, Ken.
Yeah, I just can't do it.
Yeah, I'm not sure. The aces is where I really, below ace ten, I don't know.
And we're gonna have fed some of them on the flops. You're like, we're not gonna have full free, full weight either like last time, so.
Pocket kings with the king of club. What do you do?
Some like ace, six, seven, eight.
Pocket ten.
Only with a club.
All pairs.
Nah, I mean, I'm not folding. I'm folding all my under pairs mostly, honestly.
Sixes with a club.
Nah, I'm out.
They might bluff.
Nets. A pair and a club, damn, that's nitty. Alright, that's.
Neither one's good.
Oh.
It's okay to be nitty.
Alright, so I was wrong.
Filling all those aces.
We're just raising every flush down there. Well, not every time, but. Yeah. Interesting.
I'm super sticky with my aces, like no shock.
Maybe cuz we're shallower than I'm used to.
Oh, so we said that possibly top pair has to fold here.
You said possibly, I said no way.
So ace nine.
I would have had to cut off at eight, se- eight, seven.
Ace three, just calling, okay, we had that. Ace six, raising whatever, but yeah.
Oh, Jackson, pocket jacks and pocket aces are raising some. Or mostly, and pocket threes. So sets are good enough, huh?
So you guys said queen, jack. Was just calling, right? A jack with a.
With with a club.
Yeah, I know it's raising. Well, there's some silver calling, but.
That instead of.
Yeah, it's bottom pair. That makes sense. Bottom pair doesn't meet me. Second pair. Second pair.
Second pair and I have redraw.
I guess cuz it's monotone, second pair doesn't have as much value.
King, jack with a club?
At least king, queen, king, ten and queen, ten of clubs are all trapping. We had that, right?
Uh, trees. Or raising with a club?
What's going on with the queen, ten, king, ten, clubs? Calling.
Yeah, they're calling.
Offsuit.
Oh, offsuit.
It's a single club in your hand.
King, ten, queen, ten. We had them as raises.
Yeah, it's far like call. But it's the same hand, right? So yeah, we had this wrong. Uh, jacks, pure race? Are we raising jacks here? We're not raising jacks.
No, I thought somebody said we raise all sets.
Yeah.
Nice, I just wanted to call the sets, call sets and two pairs, but sets are too good.
Clubs are almost all raising, right? Unless unless the very good ones like we gauged.
At the set, you have what? Thirty percent against the flush?
Then you fold a lot of top pairs. That's it, take away today, right?
Wait, we have, go back to that. We have to give Danny kudos. Um, it's raising the top flushes and just calling the bottom flushes.
Yeah.
Five raising, seven, six, eight, six, eight, seven, nine, seven, nine, eight.
The calls.
Are they just all calls?
Yeah.
No, only the connectors are the calls and then those ones are raising. We were both had pieces of it, correct? I think I was farther from correct.
Alright. Uh, do we want to see a low board aces, like ace for deuce?
Let's look at a board that favors the big blind.
Yeah, we'll look at one. Uh, check, check, that's small, call, here we go. He doesn't have no. None of these. So let's start with the dirty aces. Ace, eight, no heart, what do you do? Guessing we call a lot, right?
Oh, wait, check, that, right, oh.
Do you raise ace, jack? Ace, queen, ace, king, yeah? Alright, with ace, jack? Against two players, probably.
I I'm not sure.
No, not on the sport. I don't even know if we raise ace, queen.
So maybe ace, jack with jack of hearts, maybe.
Okay, so maybe, let's see it. Uh, what do we do with aces? We just call and see another street, okay, change.
No way. I'm raising aces here for sure.
I'm raising aces too.
Any gutter, any.
What do we do with change?
Any, anything, a lower set.
I think kings through fives are probably called. May- maybe some raising with the sixes and sevens.
I would only consider playing with the heart in my hand, maybe. Like two black kings here. I don't know if you're really calling, are you?
Well, what are we doing? How many fours do we have in range?
Let's find more value. We're gonna raise twos and fours, right?
We don't have twos and fours. We have a several of fours.
We have fours.
Alright, raise the fours.
Alright.
Uh, raise ace two suited, I guess, right? Or is it ace four? Which which way do we mark the combo? Is it top two or top and bottom?
Both, doesn't matter.
Raise them.
Okay, and then pocket five with the five of heart.
Might be spicy.
I think that one can call.
Alright.
Sixes and sevens, I start raising.
On a bluff sixes?
Uh, I don't wanna turn, so I wanna be able to make a straight with my pairs that are bluffing as well as the flush, so I think it's.
Then pocket threes?
Fives and sixes, threes. We don't have threes, right?
Not not much.
We have a little bit. It is in range, so.
I'm struggling to find the good bluff combos here.
Figure out how much value we have and then kind of figure out how much value.
Super easy.
King five suited.
We're we're gonna have flush draws at the wazoo.
Yeah, like.
Yeah, but which ones really wanna raise?
High heart?
Just the.
So the bad one, so again, like seven, six of hearts, right? Six, five of hearts. Um, maybe eight, six of hearts, nine, seven hearts. I think we're gonna raise our worst flushes again, draws. I think our like king, high flush draws are gonna just wanna probably call.
I think I like that.
Mostly anyway.
What about single heart?
Yeah, so you might raise some of your single heart, king, king, queen, maybe king, jack.
King of hearts, queen of diamonds.
Or like maybe even just worse, like maybe the queen, jack, queen, ten with the heart combos cuz king, high still could be like, okay.
I think six, six, five of hearts is interesting because you have a flush draw, gut shot to the wheel. Open or backdoor straight draw to the higher straight. Like if a seven, eight pop off.
Might even raise diamonds, you know.
Raise that one, Louis. Yeah, six, all the six, fives could be good candidates regardless of.
Or do we stand with like queen, jack of heart? Just call?
Yeah, I mean, that's I'm, that's how I play it.
Do you raise hearts?
Yeah, we're gonna have some hearts at raise.
Which ones?
Like maybe ten, nine, nine, eight. Eight, seven, seven, six.
You wanna raise ace, seven of heart?
Why not?
Okay.
Alright, let let's take a step back. This is going to depend on what. Bluffs that the button is going to have cuz we wanna unblock his bluffs. He's gonna be blo- he's gonna be bluffing from the bottom, I think. Like the seven, six, eight, seven.
I'm not sure which ones, uh, if we look at the button.
If he uses them for bluffs, if he uses them for bluffs, then he's a little value heavy if we're if we're going to bluff those.
LP, my suited H, queen, A, Jack, A, ten, eight, nine, eight, Chuck, nine, ten, nine, Chuck, ten.
Yeah, I think the middle ones are pretty safe cuz I don't think he's bluffing the middle hearts.
So raise hearts? Call everything else, diamond, blah, 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 we fold? Okay.
Yeah.
Where do we stand with our top pairs?
So I think.
What about ace, three, ace, five? Just call?
I think we we wanna try to card batch, like if we're raising some of our suited eights, nines and tens, I think we wanna raise some of our ace X to batch those for value. I wonder if it raises like pocket, eight, nines and tens some weight with like uh a heart. Probably not, right?
No.
It's kind of interesting.
I think we'll have mixed weight raises with our ace, eight suited plus.
I think we de- we definitely need to do something with our pocket pair with the heart.
I know, I'm really curious how it's going to. Handle all those pocket pairs below the ace.
So let's clear the top pairs first.
I would call ace, six, eight, seven, and then kind of roll my ace, eight plus. Call some, raise some.
I think with this board, I don't think we get to fold any ace.
You're gonna raise ace, nine suited into two players, Ken?
So maybe like clubs, maybe like clubs and spades, right? I just have to find a little bit of a raise with those. Raising all these other ones. I wanna, I'm just trying to card match. I'm thinking about how ranges, but I visualize a range. How it's constructed, so if I wa- like, I don't know if we're supposed to raise these shoes, eights, nines and tens, but I am, but si- since I am, I wanna have some low weights. Probably that I don't wanna get raised off of, so probably gonna go clubs and spades with like my ace, eight, ace, nine, ace. Ace, ace and ace nine at least.
Okay, what do we do with pairs now?
You don't wanna hear any of that noise.
Well, I kinda did it, but differently, look, we got the deuce raising. We got the deuce raising, we got board coverage from five to seven, eights to tens. So we got pretty, pretty good board coverage here, right?
Right, but.
And then we're card matching with the low ones every time. So it's kind of your idea. You wanna do it with your aces? It's too much raising.
No, no, no. These are all bluffs. My point is when you have some bluffs, you usually match some weight with value that matches some of those cards. And we're, these are all. Ace four and ace two are plus, but everything else is.
We're matching it with our best top pairs.
I. Ken, I understand what you're talking about. But I'm just.
What do you do with the ladies with the heart?
That definitely holds true and heads up. I'm not sure what it does. Multiway.
Reduces the weights, because we're not gonna be bluffing as much. So we're not value betting as much because like, you know. Um. We're against two ranges, so we don't value bet as much, and then we don't bluff as much, basically. But I think the general way of constructing the range holds true with just different weights.
Cause if you really look at it though, I know that GTO does the card matching. But ace, eight. It seems.
So I don't care if I get check raised off. My point is, I don't care if I get check raised off of ace, eight of spades. If I bluff that and get raised, I don't care. It's an easy fold. I don't think I'm losing much by doing that. Uh, if I take the pot down, I'm ecstatic.
Okay, maybe that's true.
Yeah, I don't know. We'll see.
But then you get, you get called by ace, jack and ace ten.
So what do we do with nines, eights? Sevens, sixes with a heart?
I think sixes could probably call with a heart, like sevens. With like sevens, eights, nines. It's probably gonna call them, but.
Alright, let's have a look at the solution.
Without a heart, maybe fold sixes, sevens, eights. Nines.
What is purple? Is that shove?
Yeah.
Oh.
We have shoves.
All in.
No one found those. We're not really raising our suited aces. We're not really raising that many flush draws. Hardly any.
Where are the bluffs?
Just six, five suited.
Six, five, eight, seven, eight, six.
Six, five of hearts, shoves.
And then it's got some, is that king nine, uh, flush draw? I guess it has to be, right?
Has to be.
So some of our worst and some of our best flush draws are going after it. Basically.
Cover the king five, Louis?
Gee.
Uh, look, ace nine, matching the king nine.
It is, it is raising with the backdoor flush, right? Even spade is raising.
No, the backdoor flush is calling. That's the only one pure calling.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right.
Yeah. The hearts are good enough to raise and the other ones are too bad to call.
What suit in ace, five suited is going nuts?
See, when I see this, I feel like. I just don't wanna, like, I'm not gonna structure ranges like this, because I'm gonna get in trouble, because I see this, and I'm like, okay, it's raising like blah, blah, blah. It's like so, such low weights. That we're gonna overdo it.
Where is it low weights?
So like the jack eight. The ten nine, the jack nine. The king nine.
Louis, all those pairs you just looked at, were they all hearts that call?
Yeah. You like. Nines through sixes, you call with only, only when you have a heart.
Most of them are suit based though, Ken. It's like if you have the hearts, you do it a lot. Otherwise, you never do it.
Yeah, but even, are they doing it full frequency? It's like king nine, is that full weight with the hearts?
Right, some of the ones you identified were, were mixing. That's like. Yeah, king nine.
So this is what I'm saying, like you gotta be careful. Like maybe if we underst- if we understood this range well enough, maybe we say, okay, okay, we can use our very bottoms, the six, five, and some of our best, like a king nine, king eight. And then screw stuff in the middle. If we're hitting them all, we're gonna be overdoing it.
Six, five is our best draw of all of them.
Or maybe it's gonna go over versus population. I don't know. Like, I don't know.
Cause six, five has the gutter. The flush draw and the backdoor straight draw on the top end.
My takeaway here is you get jams. I like that.
Yeah. Alright, let's do another one. What texture do you guys want? Low, low, low.
Anyway, I don't get to raise very much.
Not a king high board? You wanna jump down a little bit? Speak.
Well, Ken mentioned something about a big blind.
Yeah, let's do seven, six, five. Rainbow.
Rainbow or?
Yeah, I'll keep the button in wide, right? That'll be one of the hands he's in widest with.
Awesome. Does big blind lead three way?
Yeah, the caveat is big blind has some leads here.
Yeah, but still not a ton, right? Oh, my god.
Lot of done, just half of the time.
Just, just fifty-five, forty-five percent, forty-six percent, that's all.
Should we look at how we respond to a lead in the sandwich? That might be interesting.
That, yeah, that's interesting.
Not that we get. I don't know about you guys. I don't really get into the spot that much. People aren't leading enough.
No. That's right.
But it does happen.
Let's do it quickly. What do you do with your range?
Alright, what are we doing over pairs, eights and up?
How much raising do we get to have in the middle seat? Cause like theoretically. The button is gonna check. I, I, let's see the buttons. Uh, if we look at the buttons checking range, we're gonna see their bets. But do they, do they ever check sets to the?
Yeah.
Oh wait, he leads. So yeah, he still has all the sets too. Like I don't know how much raising we do in the middle is my point.
Yeah, I don't think we get much raising at all in the middle.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be really low.
It'd be.
I think we're still gonna raise like our very, very best hands. So we'll have to have some bluffs, obviously. We can still have some, but I think it's gonna be like. Ten percent or less of range.
I think if we get any raises, it's mostly gonna come from like pocket eights and in that range.
Yes, that's.
That's how it would be if he doesn't, if the button weren't in the hand. That's what it would be like, right? But with him there, is it gonna shift at all? Or is it the same concept?
I think it'll be the same concept, gate, same concept, but lower weights. Like tighter, like less. There'll be less all around of everything, I think. And more folds.
I'm guessing we don't have much raising here.
That's what I'm saying.
I agree.
Think so too. I think it might shift up even, like instead of raising eights a lot. I was thinking we might raise like jacks or tens more.
My question more is like. Oh, did you already click? Eights, nine, some tens.
Direct over pairs, top pairs and some draws.
Nine, eight, nine, eight is just calling.
Not much raising, right? Just eight percent. We call with kings, aces.
So that's the big thing. Uh, I think people right away are gonna raise like population. Like, if you're against the, like, an unstudied player in the hijack, they're probably gonna jam all their pairs.
Well, ra- raising for sure, right? Everyone is raising jacks here in position, right?
Yeah, I think so, just about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think a lot of them are just gonna jam, honestly.
I see why nines and eights make it really good. Cause nine, eights, the nuts and we're just caught, well. We're not raising nine, eight, so that. It's just because eights and nines need the most protection. But eights need a little bit less because of a nine or. Of, was it? A nine or a four po- fall off eights now have the nuts.
And we don't overfold, really. Do we? I mean, we're.
No, yeah, we're calling a ton.
Yeah, we're only folding what?
You just, you fold, uh, hearts and you fold offsuit stuff. I mean, look at ace, king off is kinda interesting though.
I think we're right around, um.
MDF.
MDF.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Fifty-five percent.
Yeah, it looks like we're pretty close to meeting MDF here, actually. So that's good. That's good to know. You're not raising a lot and you're trying to reach, you know.
It is slightly overfolding by about maybe one percent.
So. Say it doesn't happen.
Okay.
He checks. We don't bet much here. Do we? Ah, we bet plenty.
Wow.
Huh.
And we size up.
I would have thought we always check on these boards.
Uh, that we don't size up.
Well, we bet a quarter of the time. We have a lot of sevens. Which is probably why we bet in the middle so much.
So here's a, here's a thought. You have.
Eight and nines wanna bet.
If, eh, this is a spot where you gotta consider how the big blind plays. If they're a good player and they know they're supposed to have a lot of leads, or they're just dockies and they lead a lot. And they check that we can do this. If they are just passive and just don't know leading ranges, it never lead out of position, like packing a check call. Then this is probably a disaster.
Yeah, then you have to check more, right?
Yeah, I would agree, because Louis and I sat in one day and looked at, um. I think we looked at button versus. Big blind on boards where big blind should have dunk leads, where they, he no locked them to check. And. The button bet much less than. It bet larger, but much less often.
Yeah, it's just something to be aware of when you're in this spot. It's just, you gotta think, okay, what's the big blind? How's he play before you act? What's he play like? And then decide how you wanna construct your range. I think it's just really important.
Yeah, cause now his checking range contains all the good stuff that he was supposed to lead with a lot.
Yeah.
Alright, now let's have a look at another board. Which one? I would check queen high board.
How about a really?
You didn't wanna. You didn't wanna do the check, check, bet, call? Look at our range there too, for this one.
Yeah, and, and then next board I would suggest a very dry board.
One last peek here.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll be all too different from our range against a lead.
I think so. I think it will be very different, because you have a bunch of raise now, because you're the last to act.
Yeah, now we're starting to overfold. Obviously, because we share MDF. Um. Since the big line didn't leave, we have more raises, considerably more.
So a hand like pocket four here. Which is very interesting, right? Cause you got bottom, bottom man and just a pair. So this is exactly what happened to me in a live game. And I called the seven pair. And then. I folded the river. I folded the seven and then my card came. I was like, oh, my goodness.
Alright, so I was gonna ask a question. I already got the answer. I was gonna say this. So we're, I thought we might raise some pairs plus redraws, because you block sets with those types of ends. So like the eight, six has a redraw, blocks set of sixes. Seven, six blocks two sets. It's two pair, obviously. Um, there's nine, seven raise, I can't tell the colors.
Yeah.
So it's got a gutter, blocks top set. Like I think that's. Um, maybe partially why it's still in these pairs plus redraws. It dropped, it blocked some sets and has redraws, I'm guessing.
Look at queen nine. All the backdoor. With the gutter, the over.
Targeting king high and ace high combos, I guess.
Yeah. And then probably if you get called and turn a queen, it should be good.
Holding a church. Holding as queen, as jack, stand. Even if you have a backdoor flush.
Yeah. Crazy, right? Not crazy. It's just a bad board.
And then the queen wants to call a little bit more often than the other ones.
Don't understand why.
Probably because the king and the jack are bad to have. And it wants to call with an ace eye. So we defend stuff around the straight, right? Ace nine to ace four, king nine to king five. Makes sense.
Three's are dead.
Alright.
So do like a king eight. Two or some really dried crappy board. Something disconnected all the way around. King high, queen high, do whatever high card it is, I don't care. Let's get away from aces if we can.
What?
You want rainbow, Ken, or?
So like queen seven, oh, is there a queen seven two?
There's king eight deuce right there with the flush draw.
Can I ask a question real quick from our spot?
Yeah.
King, jack, two would probably be the best board for us. I'm just curious to see if we get to bet in the middle. How often?
Twenty percent.
Oh, not much. Okay. So it's not like the ace, king, queen.
Exactly.
Alright, we can move on. I need to see the rest, but if you wanna do it.
Well, I think that's a tough one, right? Okay. Guess we should look at the solution. So folding his eyes. Unless you have the front door. Holding area size, holding pocket pairs, even, even the ten of clubs, it's only, geez, Louis.
We see this a lot. You just gotta remember, because when the big blind calls on, uh, boards like this, especially with two broadways. Versus kinda like a middle ladies position, I guess, um, you know, the range is just gonna be really tight.
Yeah. So we got a bunch of kings here to mix raise and calls with. Raising king nine seems a little bit fishy here, multi-way, but. Sell the highest C B play. Queen Ja- uh, queen ten, queen jack, queen nine. Raising queen jack. With the queen of clubs. And the other ones as well, a little bit. We're raising a lot of kings here. Then ten, nine, what is ten, nine? Clubs. Or diamonds. And raising with the hand like. See? That's something we see more and more. When your head's up, you have the hand like a king, seven of gloves there. You're gonna call a lot as. Multi-way or with ICM, you're raising almost every time with the king, seven of clubs. That's something we keep on seeing. Right, what else?
New dry board.
Hmm?
King or queen high dry.
Let's look at queen dry.
There really aren't any.
There's none.
King dry, king six, two.
King six, five.
Big blind's gonna have a lot of two pairs here. He's gonna have king five, king six, six, five. Where the king six two, he's not gonna have.
Let's have a look.
Too many six twos. Alright, so this is.
Big blind check.
Really wanna drive.
We bet a little bit, not that much.
How often is button check that flat?
The button is.
I mean, big blind, big blind, big blind, big blind.
Big blind?
Yeah, is he leading twenty percent or what?
No. Hundred percent check.
Hundred percent check, okay.
Check, check, the button here is betting. Oh, he's very tight. Like it's his title range. I think quite a lot. And then. The big blank calls. And here we are. Where do you stand with? Pocket seven. You gotta call once with pocket seven or no? What about pocket fours?
I think I can fold my fours and threes and call, uh, sevens, eights, nines, tens. Man, I know we're overfolding, Jesus. But the big line's gonna be a little wider here than some of the other boards. So like, I'm still gonna put defend all my over pairs. One street.
So seven. Eight, nine, ten. Jacks?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defend all my pairs some way or another.
Okay. Raising with sixes and fives or no?
Uh, I mean, I'm sure it's gonna raise them some frequencies.
What about your, your kings?
Yeah, our best kings probably.
Six, five.
Well, yeah, I'm thinking. Ace, king, king. I think I'm raising from the top down in this scenario.
Something like this.
I don't know if I'm gonna raise king ten. Cuz they both have king, queen, king, jack. So I'm not raising King ten, honestly.
Okay, what's blue?
Uh, blue is raising.
Okay.
I think I would check or call. Bucket kings.
King Jack, I'm gonna mix raise some, call some. I think queen and H king are pure raises probably.
Yeah.
Now we gotta find some buffs.
Oh, we have six, five in range too.
So we'll aces, I guess, it'll be buffs. Some. At least with hearts and die, at least some like half the time. H two, H three. H four. Do we turn H five into a bluff ever blocking bottom set? Probably not, right?
Maybe heads up.
So.
I don't know. It feels wild. No idea.
So far, we got va- all value races. So we gotta try to find some buffs. Or get rid of some value bets.
Like uh. Maybe turning pocket fours into a bluff.
Hold on, we have eights, we have, okay, so we have this middle portion of our range we always ignore here. So we have like, we have six, five. That might raise more than king, five, king, six. I don't know. But then we have like the eight, sevens of the world. We could probably raise a seven. Maybe eight, six, maybe nine, seven, nine, eight. Gotta find some raises, right?
Seven, huh?
Well, the ones that can make straights. And flushes.
Fair.
I don't know about Queen seven. I I don't know if I'm raising that or not. It might be in there. I mean, nine.
It has good uh blocker uh. Qualities.
The queen?
Yeah, the queen and the seven. But I don't know, maybe not.
What do we do with seven, six?
I would just call.
You're not gonna raise any of your wheel aces LP, the ace.
Ken, I think you're nailing it with the wheel aces. I think all those ones down there can be a good bluff.
At least they four and three.
Clubs or spades, I mean. Ace four, ace three, ace seven.
Well, you remember on multi-way boards, we don't need. We don't need um balance when we blow.
Get rid of the H two. I'm leaving it there.
Maybe not a seven, actually. Maybe. Maybe we just call a seven.
And now we're, are we just following the middle of our range? Like, what are we doing with Queen, Jack, Queen ten, Jack ten? They're just gonna fall, I guess, right?
Yeah.
So raise nine, eight, backdoor flush.
I'm not sure about Queen Jack.
I don't think we can fold eights. Cuz eights can probably make a straight.
I'd rather raise them than call.
No, you can't call them all, though, Louis.
Nine eight has to call. Ten eight.
Yeah, well, that's a direct gutter, but ten eight's garbage.
Well, I would rather raise those.
Ten eight, a hard.
We, we already have a lot of.
Trash, just fold.
We already have a lot of bluff raises.
Alright.
Well, we don't really because they're all suited and we're raising offsuit stuff and we're not raising those full weight where it's gonna be depending on suits. So we are lacking bluffs. We have way more value than bluffs here, way more.
Yeah, what about the calls?
That's fine in a multi-way pot.
Yeah, but I still think we could find some more is all I'm saying. I think like a nine, like a nine, eight, I think you probably raise, maybe even a ten eight, maybe. I don't know. Or ten nine, ten nine can make, yeah, a straight to the nine, straight to the king, flush draw. It's got two overs.
Do you call a hand like ace, eight offsuit pair?
No.
You sure? It's a name.
Alright, LP seven.
Not, not, that's stretching it too far from multi-way.
Okay.
I might call ace queen. The rest of my aces unfolding. Offsuit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still folding ace queen.
Yeah, I, I think I'm uh folding ace queen as well. Maybe call. Or no, definitely call ace queen suited, but I'm not happy about it.
Um. Ace queen suited with the backdoors.
And yeah, 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 that's what I meant.
I call my ace queens, fold my other junky aces, like ace jacks, whatever to me right now. I'm out. Ace ten, I'm out.
These with the backdoor flush like hearts. It's good, right?
I mean, ace eight's okay, ace nine, maybe. I don't know about ace ten and ace jack. I'm folding ace ten and ace jack for sure.
No, they all have backdoor straight draws, backdoor straight, backdoor flush plus.
Yeah. There's no way you fold here.
It's way better than uh.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Right, let's see.
Oh, so we do raise ace, eight, ace seven. Ace four, ace three.
Ace four, ace three, pocket fours. Queen seven pure folding.
And whoever said six, seven, I think Joey said six, seven. That was a good. Good shout. So it looks like we turned some more like second, third pair type stuff. Well, here not third pair, but. Into bluffs occasionally in a multi-way.
Look at the nine, seven, eight, seven. They're just calling.
Yeah. But, but six, eight and six, seven.
I thought they would definitely be raises. They're, they seem like the best raises.
Yeah, it's turning some pairs with overs and some kind of backdoor flush draw into raises. It's kind of a common theme. It's like higher equity hands.
Mm-hmm.
But still don't mind folding. Like if you get raised, like Queen six is an easy fold, right? But I guess that you wanna block some other sets for the big blind. I don't know. Even the buttons got, this button's got all those sets too.
Pocket sevens, pocket eights are raising. I think we're starting to see that's pretty consistent, the lower ones.
Depends on the texture. They got straight redraws.
Yeah.
Why is Queen six? Queen Jack. Yeah, it's like second pair and then. Queen six is big too.
It wants to play a few sixes, right?
Blocking the set.
But neither of them have sets of kings either, right? So we're blocking top set with them. It has to have something to do with it in my mind. I, I don't know. I feel like it has to.
Yeah. Right, we do one more?
Him needs the most protection to like. Kinda mergey potentially. If they have a hand like uh seven, eight. Probably um. Ten high boards. Look for a dry one. There's no dry boards.
Nah, you gotta go like king. There was like a king, six, two or something.
It was two tone though, I think. Yeah, it was.
It's still. But it's one of the driest words I've seen.
Yeah, that's fair.
King six, five, we just did. That's too connected. Look for something more disconnected. King six, two, two tone, I think there was, right?
Yep. It was king six, two, two tone. I see.
Yeah, but with a flush draw.
Yeah, but it's still the most disconnected that they have here solved, right?
No, I think. Like King six, five.
We just did King six, five.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. Like in my mind, King six, five is drier than. A flush draw board.
What about Jack ten, four?
That's it's kind, it's got hi, it's connected to the end of the ranges.
I think that's gonna be a good one, Jack ten.
It's not dry. It's not real, it's not like super, it's not like not dry, but.
What do you do with bucket eight?
Interesting to look at. I'd be.
Yeah, what do you do with bucket eight here?
I just wanted to see a really, really dry board. Sorry.
Well, we'll put it up next, no problem. So check.
Do we have any? See bits? Nope, okay. I wouldn't think so, but I've been surprised that someone on did have a C bit.
Yeah. So button bet small. Big fan call. What do we do with our range? Bucket eight.
Well, what's been consistent is top set. Calls.
Okay. Queen has to raise, right?
Yeah.
Bears. And ace ten and ace jack is raising or no? A Jack ten suited is raising? Jack ten?
Pocket tens, pocket fours.
Pocket tens, pocket fours. What about pairs under the ten?
There, I'm not.
Probably calling nines. What about eights?
Maybe nines, eights called some frequency. And then.
Sevens.
They either fold or I think as you get lower, it's either gonna fold or raise.
Can you fold a pair here?
I'm folding my seven, sixes and fives.
Alright, what about a hand like king, queen off?
Yeah, so we're raising our queens, kings and aces. So we gotta find the bluffs that sort of are draws that kinda match. I think this is gonna be kind of an easy board to figure out, I think, for the most part.
Okay, what do you do with ace, king?
Um, I think that might just call. Actually.
Ace queen?
Bone.
The ace queen.
Yeah.
We're gonna raise some of our queen X, some of our king X. For bluff, so I don't know if ace queen wants to or not, maybe some. I think it's good mix. I think ace queen's mix.
Top pair, ace jack.
Yeah, I think it raises.
Raise? King, Jack.
So probably mixes cuz I think uh. I think both villains have King, Jack in range, so I, I don't know if we pure raise that or not.
What about a Queen, Jack? Calling.
So King nine can raise, I think.
Your tens.
Falling.
You think we're raising ace, king, ace, queen this much? Oh, no, those are calls.
So look to raise some nine X, I guess.
Ace nine off has to fold.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Raise like Queen eight suited?
Queen eight suited?
Maybe. Or no, it's not good enough. Just call that stuff.
Raise King nine, Queen nine, probably. Yeah, Queen eight.
Yeah, how do we pick which ones we wanna raise? Like last hand, we saw the open ender stuff calling, right?
Louis, I think the ten eight, ten nine might be too weak to call.
Ten eight, ten nine, those could be raise candidates, maybe.
Jack nine, Jack eight, top pair that has to call, right?
Yeah, they, they're probably okay.
A ten, you think a ten has to fold?
Second pairs, I'm not sure.
I think you could raise those, but that might be crazy.
I'm indifferent with those. Maybe the hearts, maybe you just call hearts, right? Like, and that's it. I don't know if suits, I don't even know if suits matter there or not, but. I mean, hearts feels like I can at least call hearts there.
Heart, hearts are clubs.
Yeah.
Uh, I like to just pick the high card to match if I'm gonna be, if I feel like I'm supposed to mix folds already, I just pick the highest suit and defend those.
It, it is um. It is second pair though, so it does have some strength.
Raise ten eight of spades.
I think nine.
I feel icky calling them at, at all, but.
Okay, what about nine, eight suited?
I'm not on mute, right? Test, test.
No, you're not. Uh, nine eight spicy raise maybe or fold. Oh, nine eight are direct up and down.
Yeah, yeah.
I ain't folding it.
Eight, seven, the gut shot?
And maybe eight, seven hearts raises like, yeah, low weight raise with that maybe. I still think.
These are, I think we're falling into this trap again. These are raises in a heads-up pot, but we're three-way, so the equity threshold goes up.
Yeah. What about seven, sixes? Fives.
But like seven, eight might be good cuz we can't call it either. I don't know.
Are you, are you calling pockets?
I wanna, I wanna.
And eight, seven, I'm only saying hearts at some way.
You wanna fold seven, eight, Joey?
I'm not even saying full frequency hearts with eight, seven. I'm just saying some sliver of raises is all I'm saying with that hand.
Actually.
Because of a nine.
Team fold eight, seven, cuz the nine's dirty.
And nine heads, we can get stacked.
They have king, queen. Both of them have like a, a lot of king, queen.
Ace, seven of hearts.
Sometimes, not even all.
Uh, fold.
Ace eight of hearts.
Are you up to aces?
Maybe ace nine. We could, we could bluff raise ace nine. I don't think we can do ace eight.
What about the backdoor wheel?
And the wheels, right? Like ace five of, of diamonds and. Are they good enough three-way? Are we getting trapped again here?
Uh, I don't think so.
Just, I would just pick one. I would say, okay, ju- again, I would just say only with hearts I'm gonna do this, so I'm not overdoing it in my head.
So if you're wrong, you're less wrong.
Yeah, I'm only wrong one out of four times.
Right, right.
Alright, let's have a look.
King nine is in there, I think.
Oh, my goodness, we forgot about jamming.
It's a Jack ten board. We know that strategy.
More terrible.
Seven, eight is in there.
Just gotta put it in. Put it in.
This is where we need aggregate reports so we can filter for stuff like this and then just focus on certain spots.
Ooh, all in, all in, all in, all in, all in, all in, all in with kings. Queen. King, queen and. King, Jack, all in.
Eight, seven, those calls. It felt too bad.
Jack, Jack ten.
I know, I thought so too. It's just the spades are folding.
Queen nine, all in.
Ten, ten, eight, ten nine do mix.
Jack nine. Yeah, a little bit of all in. Ten eight, not too happy about our, our play. Ten nine, not too happy. Ten nine.
Ten, seven, blocking fewer straight draws.
We missed nine, seven.
What suit is a choosing of those slivers, though? Is it the heart LP? This is like a ten, nine. Is it just hearts?
When it raises, I bet you it's spades, man. Nope, never mind. Take it all back.
Hearts and clubs as tiny slivers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it doesn't really care which suit, which suit, okay. But it's hardly doing it is the point.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, alright, that was a nice little session. We need to.
Oh, are you gonna do my drive word?
Yes, right away.
What's the biggest stack depth they have for these spots?
Forty, but there's a turn. We didn't try any turns, but there were, there's turns now. Or I have access to turns again.
We could do it Wednesday.
Yeah, 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 cuz we just did hijack, but the big blind, but.
I thought we were gonna continue some of the post swap ICM.
We can do whatever you guys want. Just let me know ahead of time.
No, I, I like multi-way too. I mean, honestly, they're both spots where everybody needs more work on.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, either way. I agree, they're both.
It was a king, six, two, I think.
Okay.
There you go, King six, two.
Check.
We see how often we bet.
Hmm, not a. No betting.
Ever?
Taking eye board, right? Oh, it should be not so bad for us, right? Anyway. Check, check, that's small, call. How do you structure it? Hey.
Can we look at button betting range really quick? Okay, so they bet sixty percent.
It looks like they bet every single combo some frequency, but ace, queen. And king eight.
They're good ace highs and then threes, fours, fives, check along. Alright, cool, thank you.
So what you, what do you do here with? Pocket seven with the seven of clubs. And then pocket five with the five clubs.
Falling.
You said what?
Yeah.
You say caller fold.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with folding too.
Sevens. But a pair of seven with the seven of club in your hand. You're above the six, right?
Yeah, I know, man. I feel this is another board where the big line's over folding, so I'm gonna be tighter.
How do you structure your flushes here? Calling with this. Raising with this. Calling with this, raising with this?
Well, they're not flush.
They're not flush draws.
Okay, so I mean. Like these here and then.
Yeah, maybe call with the good eight.
Here, something like this?
Raise some queens.
Well, we have ace, king, right?
Okay.
So raise ace, king, ace, queen, ace, jack, some.
Why are you raising ace, queen?
Oh, that's right, I'm not raising ace, queen. Ace, king, king, queen.
Yeah.
Hmm. Wheel aces you're raising there, LP, with clubs, just front doors, or do we get to do back doors to?
Just front doors. Think we have to continue.
How did we do our low flush draws on that other board? I don't remember.
Wasn't a lot of raise.
It was, it was just calling.
It was kind of mixed, the better, um.
One of them, we saw flush, like a mono board, I remember that one, but I don't remember the flush draw board.
Like, I like queen, jack, queen, ten suited, jack, ten suited, flush draws here because they also have the backdoor straight.
Do you raise the six, five of clubs blocking the set?
Yeah.
You might raise every six, five here.
So six, five, seven, six can raise? How about eight, six of clubs?
Yeah.
I don't know about seven, six. Oh, of clubs, sure.
Clubs and six, yeah, I'm, I'm pulling about a bunch of these.
But I think even like six, five of hearts can probably raise.
Nine, six is in range.
I think ace, six of clubs is a call.
Yeah, I think so too. I don't think nine, six is in range though.
Right.
Oh, right?
And then what? Raise the king, king, nine and better?
I mean, I don't know how far down I wanna raise my kings because they both have, but good kings in range.
Nine, six is in range a little bit.
Okay, yeah, but we just saw it.
So I'm raising ace, king, king, queen, for sure. Maybe start mixing the king, jack a little less, king, ten a little less. You know, that's how I do. I'll raise from the top down, feather it off as I go down.
Sixes.
Raise, raise aces, right?
Mm-hmm.
Call kings?
Raise aces, probably.
Call, call pocket kings.
So kings might raise, cuz they don't have a club, they might be able to get to raise some, actually.
Okay.
Queens, I think, I think like queens call, oh my god, queen, I guess just pairs with a club, right? Queens, jacks, tens with a club.
I, I think we've seen pretty consistently top set always checks, even. Well, we can't have the king of clubs in top set, it's on the board.
Right.
Right.
So I think pocket kings is a call here.
Are we calling ace, queen, all right, ace, queen with a cl- single club has got a call, right?
Yeah.
It's our worst unmade high card hand.
I think we raise, we raise some of these.
Okay, maybe, yeah, could be good.
With the club?
Could be good. Ace, six, I wish to call. Unfold, a, ace, seven unfold, and ace, eight unfold, and ace, nine unfolding.
I think queen, jack off is in range.
So there are just all clubs, they're suited aces mostly, right?
Queen, jack, queen, ten, jack, ten with a club.
Hmm. I would just fold all those.
Are we raising our weaks? I, I don't feel like it's been raised in the weak brought suited card, like eight, seven, nine, seven, nine, eight, are we just calling clubs?
Yeah.
Maybe raise. The, I would take this suited Broadway's queen, jack, queen, ten, jack, ten suited with the clubs, raise those.
Yeah, cuz I mean, you're called by ace of club.
With the backdoor, backdoor.
So guys, some, I guess we're gonna raise some decent flush draws.
We can't raise that whole um triangle though, like we have to choose, do we wanna raise ace, queen, queen of clubs, or do we wanna raise queen, jack, queen of clubs?
It's always.
No, I'm talking about the suited, there's only three combos of clubs. Queen, jack of clubs.
Oh, I thought you were saying the, the one club, queen, jack off.
No, the, the suited. We have the, the front door flush draw, backdoor straight draw. Backdoor straight flush draw with those, and that's only three hands.
And they have overs, and they have overs to some of the pairs that the button's gonna bet, I think. I think the button's gonna bet some under pairs here, some weights, so like the higher flush draws can core those, I guess, when we had a pair.
Are we ready to have it?
Yeah, let's just look.
Yeah, I think we're close enough. And. They're not raising, but they're calling with the club, the ones I just mentioned, the three hands.
Seems like you're raising all the nut flush draws here. All of them.
So ace, ace, jack with the jack of clubs, is that just folding?
That makes sense, cuz we usually call those.
Oh, yeah, jack of love is folding, but the ace is raising. Yeah, maybe, maybe we got a bit out of line here, raising too much jacks, right?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, we, we usually call heads up the nut flush draws, but it makes more sense three-way to use those as the bluffs.
Yeah, and then the low flushes just calls, see that cam?
Yeah. Been seeing, I saw that over and over, so I'm getting on to that.
Yeah.
Get that out of my head.
Yeah, multi-way.
Heads up, it's good.
Then um, six, seven and six, five, which combos are jamming? Just the, the clubs, okay.
Yeah, with a six and a flush draw, we saw it over and over, we just didn't have the right size.
So.
But the ace, six is calling, the ace, six of clubs, probably diamonds too.
Queen, six is the pure bluff, queen, six of, of spades is going for it.
That's not really a pure bluff, it has a pair and like you can, if you, you have outs, you have at least what, five outs usually?
The purest of all the ones that we're bluffing though, yeah, yeah. Or I guess maybe like the single ace of clubs is there too.
Alright, you guys wanna see another board?
No, I wanna see one more thing. Click the all-in, I wanna see what is the bluff in the all-in range. Um, do they have any ace, four, ace, three suited? Slivers, but that's about it.
It's flush draws.
It's stuff that's like. I have enough equity, no matter what you have.
I guess going all in, seven, six and six, five are bluffs.
Yeah.
But they're with the flush, right? Flush draw.
Yeah, 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 I can pair with a flush draw.
So, so it's middle pair with a flush draw turning into a bluff.
Yeah.
That's good, that's cool.
Alright.
Yeah, like a six won't be good at shut down usually, but we have all the equity, so just stuff it, okay?
Yeah, makes sense.
That was a fun one. We need to do more of this. Thanks a lot for watching, everybody.